It's recording, yes, sir.
Okay, we'll just, we'll just go direct briefly, yes, found out that the recording of meeting is not occurring. We are not broadcasting, but we are recording, so we're at the configuration of the phase, I guess we began to start talking about phase two, the future parking, and then police personnel. How many vehicles, and I think we were at last to widening of Fisk.
Okay, so as I said, we're going to widen this from the police station down to the corner of Maple, along with the construction of a sidewalk from the police station to the corner. That kind of links that down, links that to the corner. And I was about to turn to the next page, which is sheet one oh five, and the setup provided to you. Sheet one oh five is our utility grading plan. So from a stormwater perspective, we are not creating more than four acres new impervious, nor are we creating disturbing more than an acre of land. So from the stormwater perspective, we are all minor stormwater project. That said, we are still managing, we still need to manage our stormwater, stormwater comes down off of the fields and flows in and around the site, so we are picking it up and diverting it and collecting it.
So it flows northeast off the site?
It flows from south to north. South comes off the fields.
Goes off to the right-hand side of us.
It goes off, it goes off on the north side of, the bulk of it goes off to the north side, although some of it, a good chunk of it also goes off on the west side of the site, there's a collection system that goes down the west side. And there's drainage that runs along the side of the existing wall wall wall, and then kind of out into the church property. So the primary, the primary drainage paths are with main, we have drainage that's picking up the water that's coming off tennis court, getting piped around the community center. Community center, and piped through the parking lot down to the existing drainage system in this. We also have a drainage system, we're going to build a new drainage system in the footprint of the old police station, we have demo that building, we're going to line up with a big hole in the ground, you've got to fill it with something, might as well use a storm. So we're using for stormwater, we're going to put some perforated pipe in there and use that as our engine system. That will be built in phase with construction of the police station, so they'll stub it in. We are also posing, you'll notice that depression graded in the jog of the walking path on the west side of the building. That's going to be a small bio retention basin, we take liters from the west side of the buildings, of course, and into a bio retention basin, again, while not required, it is a nice feature, nice way to do stormwater management, nice entry to the park, we think that looks well here. Other utilities, obviously a connection for sanitary sewer runs down, again, one of the things to notice is everything's all scrunched together between the existing and the opposed police station. And that's so that we can build the sewers, the sewer, the water, the electrical, and the stormwater connections, all in phase one, before we built the parking lot, when we demoed the police station, we kind of had this push stuff out of the group, a little bit of challenge, but worked pretty well. Looking to our next sheet, I haven't, I took the order on the drawings. So we looked at lighting. Normally, when you do a police station, we light the parking lot, because they're fairly high lighting up. However, here, we're in residential neighborhood, so we partly minimize that. So we're at an average of that, two foot panels in the parking lot, we've had two poles along the east side, sixteen feet, so relatively low. Some people like it lower, my preference is sixteen foot, because that way, when your stalkers go through, they don't take points out. They act up with bodies up, that we don't wind up having to replace the pole every time, better that way.
What is, what is the nearest residence to the other side?
There are no residences on that side, so. The church. Then we have building mounted fixtures at nine feet, filling in the lights along the pathway, even the parking lot, and that's the light, lighting the areas where we do inspections of the police cars. So you know, those light levels are a little bit higher, but still, in a very, you know, I think your highest is around five-foot candles there on the parking lot, so not terrible. Pretty nice light there, those lights in the police parking lot don't typically get dim. Additionally, keep those up all length, point at our operations, so that it's on parking lot state. Now, when you go around to the other side, we have, again, we have wall lights, wall mounted lights on the building, we have path lights on the path. Path lights are bowler to about forty-two inches high. And building mounted lights on that side as well, with mounted lights on the existing basketball court. Those are all, you know, those are all dimmable fixtures, if so, if that's what, you know, the system. Do, we can program the bowlers to have motion detectors in them, we can have them at nine, ten to twenty percent of their light levels, except when motions detected, which is likely the right program.
Three and a half feet, four hundred and ninety-two minutes.
Bowlers are, my look is the wrong one, bowlers are four and a half feet, or forty-two inches tall, and are four hundred and ninety-two minutes. With the exception of two of them, with three of them, which are circulate distributions in the front of the building on the front block.
This, this might be a question for Drew.
Sir.
Did this come, this subject, the lighting, this come up with the, the person, the neighborhood, and, and was this then been discussed, like current plans, when people were directly in west? You know, maybe across the street diagonally, you mentioned some of those residents.
Yes, sir, and specifically focused on the assisted lighting control, I believe it's called, or the lighting assistant control. And then we also had our community tree expert from CME, who also specializes in lighting, could go through and validate as well.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just an important thing to engage the public on, something there.
And there's a solid fence along the way.
There's, there's a board of work fence down that property line, so that screens in further. Fixtures are very directional downlights along the building. Spillage, if you were to remove the bowlers, actually, if you look at the lighting, if you look at the lighting on the back of the building, which is the same picture, you'll see that just past, you know, the one row of the numbers just past the lighting circle, that the the one-foot candle circle and the lights rope were down to point two-foot candles, which would be about the fence line, even not, even not even, probably in the middle of the path. So the light levels fall off very fast from fixtures in the building, not spilling.
For police work, do we require normally rear light up?
No, I say, the light levels in the parking lot are on the low end of what we use for police parking lots.
Is it changing much from what's existing? I mean, obviously, do you partner with the lighting levels, do you know how to prevent it?
I honestly don't remember how much light is in the lot, I had looked at it, but I don't.
There's, there's, there's one light.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not well lit, it's not uniformly lit.
Yeah, so this will, the effort here was to make it more efficient.
Definitely, it's more, it's more efficient, it, it means it's relative, I mean, it's, it's fairly uniform, if you look at it. One of the things with, with lighting is if it goes from dark to bright, light to dark, it becomes very hard to see detail, but keeping it uniform, your eyes adjust, and that helps. Again, we have higher light levels, and we, we just have to do inspections of the police cars, also, we use wider parking spaces where the police are doing inspections.
And those are the lights that have to stay on.
The police, the police law, the intent is to leave that on.
Leave that on from dawn.
You really don't want to wait for the light to pop up.
No, no, I understand.
So that's lighting. Next page, moving back to our landscaping plan. We have a great people landscaping. So along the front of the building, we have a mix of native, well, evergreen deciduous herbaceous perennials. Providing seasonal on greens. Along the west side of the building, along the public path, there's a mix of mostly deciduous and evergreen trees, and I guess we tried to, apparently, the choices for the tall narrow trees, those are not completely native, as from what I understand, but I understand that our landscape architects go to the borough's tree expert, and they agree that those were very good choices, and they're not basing them a appropriate choice in. We also have evergreen trees, shrubs and grasses there, and we have a fully planted grain garden along the easterly side of the property, we have, again, we have a mixture of grasses, herbaceous perennials, evergreens and deciduous, shrubs, shrubs and some tree trees. Tree trees across the front of the property, landscape along the rear. Fairly well landscaped, and deer resistant, for the most part. I'm not sure how hungry the deer are down here, depending on my house, or even if they're fine out, they like them. Even the things that they're not supposed to. Figured deer resistance is a good idea. Couple other features, you'll see that on the side, there's a gray, white brown shaded area on the right side of the parking lot, that is the jet, is the new generator. Generator goes in a sixty-five decibel sound enclosure, it's most, most of the people can get in a generator. And just beyond that is the existing tower we talked about before. Down right there, that remains, there are conduits that go in, it goes to the police station, the power to the police station. And that's the transition for that, what else?
Is there, on the property line currently between this church and the current police station, is there a significant buffer of trees currently that would have to be removed?
There is not, there is, there's some general vegetation, I looked at it, nothing.
Yeah, you're right.
Virtually nothing.
Yeah, you're right.
There's some overgrown, there is some vegetation there, although it's kind of undecked. The extent of the trees where they're being removed are on the west side.
By the current parking lot?
By, by, by the residents there.
Is it going to be bare, or is it going to be?
So.
Not, not, not including the replanting, but are any, are any of the trees on the property line considered specimen?
They've all, they've all been inspected, and they've all been determined to be either in poor health, or most of them.
Okay, that was per our CPA, community expert, went out on the site, which she walked through. Out of all the landscape, and there's more in trees, everything else is either diseased, invincible, no one's seen it.
You know, I guess. What's that? Oh, I was going to ask if the shade tree commission had a chance to take a look, so thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Is, is there a reason you guys are keeping lawn on the east side right there? Where's that existing building, instead of finishing the landscape, and to have a path, eventually to go through to the other parking lot, or?
Well, there's a path, there's a stone path, if you look at the very bottom, you circle the stone path there, right there, so there's a stone path going there. There was just difference, difference in interest, we think the landscape, the last, the last fifty feet, or the last N feet there.
I said, no, there is a reason for that little piece of grass that you're going to have to maintain, as opposed to putting a few more trees and not have to worry about it, but.
No reason we can't install that, they probably looked good when they were, when they were, growing it up, a little bit different. So among the other things, with, to go back to your master plan, we are providing the pedestrian path and its access to the park for connectivity, which is one of the objectives in your master plan, so connects to pedestrians, the road. Get better access to the building, the community center.
While you're on that feature, to the front, to the street, is there, is there going to be a drop curve there?
There is a, not a drop curve there, there's probably going to be a catch basin right there.
There's a catch basin there, so that if someone were to come, they might use that pedestrian path, they would not have access by way wheelchair or anything like that.
That is not, I mean, the sidewalk itself will be accessible from Maple, but.
But you couldn't drop some off.
But you could drop some off there. Not, not in a wheelchair. You could drop them off in the police station and put a handicap parking space, and they could get there that way.
You said, and there are drop areas for the, all of the handicap accessible spots to the front.
Yes, yeah.
The extent that one is done in, in the front, if you still want to be good parking, you have the rear space with the handicap to the rear of the lot. How do you traverse that, if you're not going to the community center, if you're still going to the police department, do you just?
You'd have to traverse, you'd obviously have to go across, however, the, for, the police department only requires the one parking space. And we had, we had two there, we actually, the police department, the, the parking lot itself requires two parking spaces, we have three, because the proximity and cheese for the community center. We also have a hatched area at the very back of the parking lot there, is a turnaround area, so if it pulls into a den, and it's back, back out, or pulls into.
I'm assuming you're going to have some type of drop, drop area or ground level to go into the community center.
There is a press curve at the community center.
Right, but once you get into that community center, there's no way to communicate them to the other sidewalks, either alongside the police department, or to get back to the there's basketball courts, you should, you know.
There's access to the basketball court, if there's a sidewalk around the side of the community center, around, actually, there's sidewalk and walkways all the way around the whole community center. You can access the community center, basketball court from the community center, as well as the rest of the park, they were all off to the west.
Handicap accessible.
It's all created.
It's all created.
It's all, whether, whether it's handicapped accessible implies a whole lot of things that I can't make a certain statement.
Fair, fair response, I'm just, I'm just trying to say, once, once someone comes out of the handicap accessible spots at the back, they're going to be able to access into the community center, yes, it's upgrade, use the walkways. They will not be, but they'll be limited to there, they would not be able to go to the front, with the, any walkways.
Correct, okay. They can access the, they can access the parking lot, there is not a direct connection between the community center and the police station.
Did, did you guys look into that little corner right there? I know we, we discussed it a little bit.
The grades are such, there's, so we have two problems with that, where this site is very great constr- constrained. The community center must read to the basketball court and the tennis courts. So the great, community center grade is absolutely dictated by that. The police station grades, we have the salad court in the middle, which we haven't talked about, so we have salad courts and garages in the middle. Those are restricted and tied to the front door elevation. And the back is tied the relationship, there's a door there. And so those, and the front entrances are all constrained, the handicap and the, the elevation of the parking lot to the handicap is first handicap parking space is constrained to the street. So the whole thing is really fixed within, believe it or not, three inches of where it can get properly. It, it took about a dozen iterations to get the grades balanced.
So to connect this back walk on the community center to the sidewalk and the police station down here in the bottom corner.
Could not be accessible.
Not handicap accessible, it could be accessible via step for people to walk from the police station, community centers can be walking through the property that way.
Correct, however, there is a manhole that has to go there because of the logistics with the sewers, and so at this point, it's not a desired connection.
Is, is it a major lift to put a drop curve, can you put a drop curve just canted to the west of where that grade is? On the, at the end of the path, on the, on the north side of the path?
I believe the municipality is thinking about extending the sidewalk down to an abandoned bike on the street.
Locust.
Locust, at which point there would be a drop curve there as well.
Well, in the meantime, though, if you, if, if it's possible, and it's not a major, put a drop curve right there, I mean, again, you'd have to steer a bicycle around that, that break, but I, you know, I, I, you think about people coming into the house, you know, trying to, if kids, if kids on bikes, they're going to come at that curve, and they're even going to ride around to the drop curve in the, at the sidewalk in the parking lot, or they're going to have to lift the front wheels up, and they're going to try to find the, you know, driveway and one of the people right next door. Because kids on bikes are maniacs, we have them. So, I guess, is that a big sort of geometric riddle to do that?
So you have, you have a catch basin?
There's a store. There's a catch basin right on the property line, there's the drive, is the driveway, is the neighbor's driveway.
We can look at that as.
We can look at it, I don't, I don't know the, I'm looking at it on paper right here, I can't tell you yes to that.
I actually, I actually like the idea of offset drops, that like, kids not like, they're coming across the white line after. But yeah, they can turn before, you know, kind of, but they'll also keep them from getting all across the front of the property, so.
There's a few passes, the six will fly.
So, I saw, you know, there's five.
Accidentally, I think that's a driveway.
No. With the catch basin, that would be very unpleasant, so if you had a press curve. You'd have to do an offset to press curve, you'd probably have to move it like halfway between the pedestrian path and the front entrance to the building to go to work cooking at it. I don't know that that serves the purpose, I guess if I was a kid.
If they're going to cut across a long, I don't know if you have it.
I will, probably, I would be probably either coming in the neighbor's driveway, or coming in the police driveway, and go that way, I don't, probably come in the middle there.
So then, so yeah, please just look into that, because otherwise, then you're directing, you're directing the kids into the police, I mean, the most they're definitely driving them to the police driveway, up on the sidewalk, into the lawn.
We can take a look.
Well, I'll draw, I, we'll give the original station plans, this pathway is really developed, and I've got to compliment you guys, and then, and then you've set it in there and everything, it's really, it's a pretty cool part of the design.
Is there any implication that the sidewalks that are wrapping the community center will eventually connect to future phases of park development?
That's a good question.
Are they designing such a way?
Something we're looking at, obviously, we're going to be utilizing the tennis court for staging area, or construction, to store material and then utilize construction efforts. We also anticipate possible disruption of that basketball court, but there's going to be some type of restoration effort. Because of the site and the, and the shape of the lot that's not to develop on, we're really only showing what's going on this plan as a phase one, we're starting to discuss potential phase two on what that's going to be. And to your point, Jim, one of the points I had brought up was, we need to look at the high-traffic areas, on foot and bike.
Right.
People will inevitably cut through that parking lot and walk through that green space, and what we think at this standpoint, we have to look at, I hate to use the word hardscape, but we need to look at something that's going to last.
Right.
For the amount of pedestrians that are going to be going through there, or, or kids on bikes, or parents pushing baby couches.
Children walking, exactly.
Cutting through. So those are things that we're still tweaking.
For you and Susan Hall.
And we've been having.
And, and just to add a little bit more color, when we did the open houses, I'm going to say ninety percent of the feedback was on the basketball courts and the tennis courts.
Yep.
So when we were looking at it, knowing that phase two, we thought would be, be great if you had a connection here, and then here, right?
Yeah.
If we could just connect all this, so when we, knowing that the intent is to shift into phase two, and that we can further improve access without compromising the integrity and the functionality of the design as this, that's where it kind of went. So just wanted to provide a little bit, I forget the number of, it was a lot of feedback, but not, yeah.
So it is designed in such a way that it's flexible?
Yes, yes.
Next.
Yes.
Um. The infrastructures will set up that way too, so whatever happens, if and when a phase two occurs, the infrastructure that goes in, the placement of the foundation, all that intercepts that law. And there's more management.
So that it wouldn't need to be recently.
We just need to be ripping things out for the next phase. Looking down, the planters, letter, I think I hit everything except the question about the fence on the south side of the police station. There is an existing fence around the edge of the parking lot, that is a post and rail fence. We, we're showing a new post and rail fence that runs along the side of the walkway that wraps around the rear of the building and continues along the side of the basketball court. Essentially, the exact same place that it is. Just to give, provide some separation from the park, from the police activities.
Does, does the fence wrap the basketball court? I think we.
It goes across the basketball court.
It's shown and stopping at the, stopping at the police station.
I think it stops at the southeast corner.
And I guess the point of our question was just, it sounds like you're going to have metered vehicles at the parking lot in any ways, but any concern about the basketballs hitting the communities are? The hoops are right against.
We really wanted to maximize the one-out area at the end of the court, we right now, they're playing basketball with the post and rail fence on the side, but do you want me, if you look at the court, the court is short, what do you gain with the, the backboards are set right at the edge of the court, so the goal was to, you know, at least take two steps outside. One out, we actually, if you look at the setbacks on the police, on the community center, they're off balance, was actually pushed towards the east, just to give it extra step. And give it one more, a little more separation.
That's the lookout drive line.
And, and great, right, I, I remiss, so we had five design iterations to the community center. The, designed three, this would be five, was, was wider left to right, so it was actually closer. And after having discussions with the community, the residents, we actually shrunk it left to right and elongated it north and south. Just wanted to add that comment as well.
All, all utilities underground?
All utilities are underground, anything special actually done, underground for the antenna, or? It will have the one conduit suppressed for the antenna.
Same thing with the generator.
Same thing with the generator. No gas, all electric.
So if you guys did a cost analysis, about, Drew, right, you guys?
We did the cost analysis, and then between the state mandate, the length of the building, the government decided, keep it all electric.
All electric, yes, sir.
Comment number ten, if Andrew should record.
The subdivision was completed. The, the, the note on the drawing actually says subdivision line approximation, approximate.
Just, that's almost where it was, just for landmark, not, not what you're seeing.
We're not separating, we already do that, we did that, correct.
Is there, is there anything by way of number four? Proposed solid. We're not there yet.
We're out there yet. I think I hit everything else.
You have a question ahead, I, I, I have concern from what your comment was before, that appears that in the circle in the front of the building, the post rebuilding, that's the flagpole, I assume that's what the circle, the square line is.
Yes.
What is, what is to the right, well, to the, shouldn't say to the right, to the east, what, what are?
Stepson.
Stepson.
Just a vital walking back to the.
I see, okay, so that, right.
And you said that's Memorial at five fifteen.
Any other proposed signage?
Oh, okay.
And the only, and the only lighting that there is, is in ground lighting.
Correct.
The flagpole's lighted, yes. That's it.
Just a thought, as we're discussing the different, I'm not sure what the term was, the, the, the curve that would allow the bikers to come through on the west side of the property, would moving the flagpole in Memorial to the other grassy area give more flexibility for that path and better bike access, so the kids don't have to go through the parking lot? It seems like the, the right-hand side is, the east side, I should say, is kind of open space.
I don't know that move, I, I wouldn't want to swing the path across the front of the building.
Fair, I mean, fair enough, since you have equal space on either side, if you're trying to make an adjustment to the walking path to the, to the bikers, a little bit more efficient.
That, I, I have a catch basin, it's going to be catch basin that's there, that connects the drainage system from the east to the west. East to the west, because everything goes out this, from the inlet on the far side of this, so the catch base has to remain there. Um, I don't want to catch those in the park, even in the sidewalk. That would not be desirable.
All right, well, I just I just I asked a question.
You you would wind up with a very strange sweep across the front of the building that I don't think would be.
But I think somebody made the point that, you know, if the kids are coming in, you know, a hundred miles an hour. Maybe a force to slow down, an ass herb of sorts. Kind of, right? Um, it's not exactly to people, but it would be, you know, not a straight line through.
Ten yards of sand. One thing I didn't hit are setbacks. Um. You know, front yard setback or rebuilding of twenty two foot nine to the overhang, side yard setback for the police station of sixteen foot six, sixteen point six feet. To the front canopy and six point four feet to the park. And the community center, we have a seven point, a seven foot setback to the west, a five point eight foot setback in the east. And a six point four setback to the south. There's. Building a record.
If the need proves, do you have room for bike racks?
There's a bike rack, we have bike racks proposed on the corner, we will. Of the uh, path coming in. You may or may not see them on here, but you definitely see them on.
I see.
But it's over it around the bend, just we will have.
So I have another, sorry, another question, uh, more of a functionality question rather than a design, and Chris, I'm thinking of you on this one. Baseball community perspective, the bathroom situation and that entire part is always kind of needs a little bit of design, do you know, I'm sure you have discussed. The access to the bathrooms in the community center.
Twenty four seven.
Twenty four seven is the plan.
They'll have separate entrance um, for the public to access the bathrooms, but it is a good question.
True, and there's gonna be specific technology used as an output a lot. So. So if you see, if you look here, Dave, right, so the CDX here.
We understood it was just a different path, it's already been done for you guys.
So these doors will be, our intent is that it's gonna be controlled electronically. So if you do dust at dawn or twenty eight upset or wherever it is that you can still access the site. Obviously, there's cameras and everything.
Yeah, yeah. Is that door on the on the east side, kind of close to the property line?
So we are five, there's only five foot between. The on the east side between the building and property line, so you have a five foot wide walk, which pretty much puts it where on the property. And then there's the stone pad to connect the.
Wait, remind me what the the residence that's east of the community center, south of the fiscal is there? Is that a wooded area, is there a house right up against it? Now, it's kind of like, what's south of the church, probably, maybe it could be right, but I'm just.
Yeah, in church, there's three or four houses.
Yeah.
Zoom in there, that's its house course.
So, okay, so the 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 wall, the wall there, I don't know what you call it, wall, wall, wall. That's gonna be where that bathroom entrance is, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right, so it would be open space beyond the door there with the the property, okay.
And there's, I mean, there's some existing vegetation on the property line to the house on Maple.
Hmm.
Um.
Yeah, I didn't know if that property line on Maple was for the. Uh, but it, I just didn't want it to feel confined and kind of scary for a little kid to go back there, it was all, you know, dark and, you know, narrow, so. But it looks like it would be open, so.
That is all I have of my full questions.
There you said the uh, I guess the house, uh, the we got the west side here.
Oh, yeah.
That that's the fence that's on the borough property line. And that you said you guys discussed with them and it's whatever.
When Chief went met with them, let them know what's going on, and they're more than happy to support every. Who, you know, our our initial discussions is, we're gonna try and help them out.
Right, right.
Questions, though.
Yes, I'm nice. All right. Rick, thank you for your thorough presentation, thank you, committee. I haven't been this here tonight. Like, Rick, I think this is my third time. Later with the next several years. So. I'll pretty much briefly with the way the business covered was so thoroughly. Like to start with this image. Because of. In some senses. It was the aerial view understanding a relative scale in surrounding buildings. But um, helped us. Remember that we were gonna make a one story police building, that we needed to break the mess up into pockets. So it didn't look like one big. Single structure, so as you can see, they are the aerial view of the police building, we have it, it's basically a sort of like a dog bone. Two ends that run pretty much east west and middle part runs with cell next to them. And the scale of each piece of those three pieces is similar to the scale of the surrounding houses in church. As Lucas indicated right there. And as you'll see from the building elevations. This is even more evident when seen from eye level instead of aerial view. Uh, I I think you all know this, but I wanted to emphasize that. Even though. Um, when you look at it like this, you you think of this big open property, we did have to deal with the fact that. The fields. The fields property is green acres. And so, um. Although those close property lines to the south and west of the. Community center are only a few feet away. They're all, they really only have a paper because the borough owns it all. But we have to respect those because we cannot build on the green acres property unless we're building recreation facilities, neither of which is what we're proposing. So I just wanted to make sure you all understood that. One of the questions that Henry important asked before. He wants to talk about materials and colors, so I guess first let's go to the floor plans of the two buildings. Or actually, that's that's a good one to do that, this helps you understand. Amassing the colors of the buildings. You just wanted to establish the new buildings from the surrounding. The parts of this presentation, so you get a sense now, where clearly, I think, how the way we've broken up the police building helps agree. As a smaller group of, almost like a, like a village, instead of one larger structure, because it's got a much bigger footprint than anything nearby. Next, please. That's good, okay, so on the far right is the. Plan of the proposed police building. And. I won't get into all the details, but in general. The north end. Is sort of like a front porch that you'll see in the elevations, basic fiscal. And then inside is a public lobby and a service window into the records bureau. That's good. And then, and this all has to do with the complicated interior interior connections we're required to have. To meet all the standards for accreditation, least of the for compliance with the Department of Corrections appointments. And so the salary board is just at the bottom of that image. And all of the. Attending processing areas and cell one all have to be connected to them. And so they are just above the salary board. If we zoom out a little bit. Essentially, the entire left side, you know, of the building is offices and work spaces. Starting at the at the north, the records, and then the detective bureau. Then the chief's office, and then a bunch of other dedicated offices for the staff. And as you continue down, we come to the our content stream. And then the lower left corner is the break room. Along the bottom, the south edge of the building, is the cluster of men's and women's locker and shadow rooms. And as Rick mentioned before, the staff entrance is on the far right there. And so. Whereas open lane from the north, open fiscal, the staff will enter the south end. They'll come in and right there, they'll have the locker rooms to the right, as it can be, will be the training room. They have a prep room. Armory, so it's all all those internal role functions are all concentrated in the south end.
You have, I mean, it's just important to note that we have um, a locker room for female police officers as well now, um, which we did not have before.
And with respect to that, if you if you notice, you'll see that the. The men's and women's locker rooms are essentially backed up to one. And the reason for this is that. We have found, we've dealt with this work there, over the last fifteen years, and we expect the training to continue. The ratio of men to women in the departments is changing. And so in order to. Be able to accommodate those changes in features economically as possible. We've provided a total locker count, which is a little more than you have now. Total staff. But we've also put this partition in a way that in the future, let's say you have four more women and four or less men. That partition can simply be moved over. Without having to rebuild anything, just move a partition, it doesn't affect anything, the plumbing doesn't affect anything else. So it allows you to accommodate those changes in the future, which is one of the big changes that a lot of. I've spent fortune to accommodate. Then if we zoom out a little more. Uh, you can see how the two garages are going to be. Basically. They're parting. And in between the two garages are a series of storage rooms and utility rooms. Or large evidence. And other. Misleading stories for the police. So now if you scroll down the page, we can look at the. Very centering detail, right? I should point out that in this relationship, number four, the planner's letter. We're trying to use a common. And building materials for both buildings, so. And also to make them. The residential too. So you'll see this more when we get to the elevations, but we didn't, um, platform sign. Using asphalt single roofing, using. Flat wood windows, residential steel.
Will that be architectural asphalt? Uh, we think, so like that they higher into the grades. And then the windows, um, you know, again, how do we detect the grade of windows to make sure that they don't look like L?
Well, we say that we don't need too much help for that, because the code requires extremely. Uh, strong, uh, high wind resistance because of the site.
Right.
So we're going with very high end windows. And many of the places around the place are gonna have tempered glass as well, for instance, facing out to the basketball. In case of everything basketballs. Plus, that'll be very high performance windows in terms of.
Well, on that topic, if you don't want my jumping, I noted that in the drawings, there was uh, what looked like, you know, the lines that would indicate hardwood floors or would. Simulated or wood floors in one of the drug in the driving package, I don't. Uh.
But we have some higher end vinyl tiles. And we're not using any expensive floor, uh, we're using very functional material.
I actually, I'm gonna go not the other way in terms of cost, but in terms of finish, if we look around this like finished, we look around the rooms, we look around this place. Uh, has there been any discussion or consideration given to the aesthetics of the flooring or the trim or any of the inter interior finishes?
Oh, we've talked a lot about flooring.
Okay.
And there probably, I didn't read with them, but there are, I think, eight or nine different types of flooring between the two buildings.
Hmm.
Between the. Most durable, first of all, in the same block. You know, you're doing very heavy resigned flooring. Really certain to be as flexible as possible for the different activities. Surrounding tile. Vinyl tile, luxury on the multi L and P key slots like the lobby, the lobby is into going. Um, we haven't really talked about interior trim because there's other, other than the community center, there's almost no public space whatsoever. In the most, just a small rest of this.
We did discuss the pros and cons of carpet versus floor and just decided ultimately, this is very difficult to keep carpet clean. Yeah. And the public will have the opportunity to weigh in on the floor and as we get closer.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, the specific brand too, if you want to know as well. Or a P K.
Thank you.
So, back to the question of um, materials. We haven't yet discussed amongst the the colors we're going to use. But. I can tell you that the. From my perspective. Insistent with this whole approach to using similar materials, similar scale for both buildings, I could see making the color. Um, the outside of both buildings the same, or perhaps. Um, for instance, just by way of example, let's say you had. Gray siding and white trim, and the police building, maybe you have the reverse. Really standard, so there's some more examples without looking like this. Same thought, what we haven't done to the surface yet, yet at all. I guess at this point it'd be helpful to go look at the community center and tell to answer some prior questions. So we noticed that. In the upper left and right corners, they're sort of almost like a vest. And the idea here is that. If you come from the outside. You come directly into that vest and go into the bathrooms, even if the rest of the community center is locked off and closed. And saying that, if the outside floors are on. You could access the bathrooms. In conjunction with an activity within the center. And this was very important to get these separate functions and give you an ability to operate and. Open, both open, both closed, or either one open. Because we understand all the different activities that are taking place in the building and on the site. You also notice in the middle, down the middle of the building vertically, you'll see a fully partitioned, this was. Really late development in the. Being able to subdivide the community center. With the partition similar to the problem seen in convention settings. Where. Both side. At the same time. In the lower left corner, we have a kitchen area. Which is um, gonna be outfits to serve. Um, activities within the building. There's a service window. That allows you to serve on the kitchen. There are two small mezzanines, one in each end over those mechanical. Which is where a lot of the air conditioning equipment will be located. All right, at this point, I think we should go to the elevations. So on the left, left side, we see the. The upper left, the entrance view, from fiscal street looking toward the entrance of the police department, there's a question for about. Signage, and you can see that openly. One of the supportive. But so I tell everyone about this building is. That if you scroll to the right, you'll see the entrance to the meeting center is very similar. Scale, similar materials, similar signage. Slightly narrower than the police building, same window. The idea being that when you look at these two buildings in the street, you understand that they're all part of the same. Okay. And I mean, just below the entrance, the meeting center, you can see the south side, it's in most of the plans. Probably a substantial open. And this, this is coming out of the two community. With a small pattern. Just in front of the tennis courts. And if you zoom out this morning, go back to the left side page, you'll see the, the, um, south end of the police building, there's high windows there in the locker. If you scroll down, you'll see the, the east side and west side of the police building, east side of the two garage doors. The west side, like the windows to all the offices.
What did the anticipated, was the anticipated material for the railing along the, uh, front elevation, along the front porch?
Some sort of balustrade, we haven't actually been material, maybe something like. Five of this, we have finished.
Can, can I put in, we should put in or make a recommendation to work with wood railing? Um, simply because that little piece of it could, you know, a metal railing, sort of metal vinyl looking thing up there. Could trash the whole front elevation, uh, just as a historic house guy. It's, it looks beautiful and I, I think that could make a big difference. Is that, how wide, what's the depth of the porch?
I think it's about six to seven feet.
Okay, um, is it functional or is it decorative?
Well, actually, if you look at it, you probably can't tell. The left half of the, the left in the ground is a way, yeah. The right half is level and it could probably have chairs or something up there if you want. But it's not.
Be a nice, maybe a touch of more rocking chair.
When we, so background on this, when, there were part of the open houses, we provided three different options. So we drove around town and looked at, porticoes, porches, wraparound porches, and kind of found common themes. And then presented that the two houses that just went on the across the street have a similar front porch. Design. So again, go back to that resident friendliness, not only having up with the suggestion, but then having the validation of the houses that, the residents were, were in agreement and echoed the residential aspects of the porch.
And I'm all about a rocking chair. I think it should be the Joe McGovern.
I think, I think the porch is great and I think that's a big touch and I, you know, all I would say is the red, just, something that looks somewhat old in terms of the railing, not old, worn out, but historic.
Check, check.
Uh, one thing I forgot to mention before, the entrance to the, police department, that we've been requested to reuse the, uh, glow place. Their outside, we haven't yet exactly figured out which place we're gonna go there, but they're gonna be probably anchoring. So, uh, I guess at this point, um, if there are any questions.
So you, you said the west side of the community center, right, the west, yeah, west elevation. Those are gonna be all tempered windows because those were gonna be the basketball, basketball section?
Windows play basketball.
But. Until phase two and everybody knows the.
We have, uh, two members of the public here, so I just wanted to make sure I acknowledge that anyone has some questions, uh, in the public before we, before we move on. Bye, man.
We're both on the slide.
I'll just, uh, to point out, to, the question about the cutouts in the third room, what, sorry, well, the neighbor's driveway is just a few people.
Yeah, I think just that, I was thinking a little further about that, that really should be given heavy consideration because otherwise, if it's not convenient to use the path, they're just gonna go through the parking lot. They're not gonna go in the curb, you know, up the sidewalk in the parking lot and go right into the path, they're just gonna run straight back. Um, so, you know, within the limitations of what we've got there. And I was on the path committee the original time, so listen.
Uh, one question that we're going a little backwards and this might be more for you. I, I'm looking for a trash enclosure on the parking, parking lot.
Well, I did, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So if you go back to the police plan. Well, actually, you can see like.
I see the trash room. Just garbage cans and we walk them out?
What they have right now.
No dumpster, no front loads?
No dumpster right now, it's just like it is four, four of our roles. And the chief said that was good, will we talk to him?
The break, the break room in the police station, I mean, this is just a comment. Um, you guys using like a, uh, hard pipe water cooler? Sorry, is there gonna be like a hard piped water cooler?
Well, the, the plumbing requires us to provide either water coolers or, um, bomb fillers.
Yeah.
In both buildings and we have long discussions, we're, well, how many? Everyone in all these, because they, they got some bombs.
Okay, I saw my computer, I just didn't know if the break room's gonna have them or where you're gonna do them next.
Bottle pillar and the break, break. Bottle pillar and water fountain combos for the community center, given that kids always felt that in the world.
Right, so that, okay.
Mayor Albert, you, you wanted to speak?
I think I said this, the U ones drew and then I forgot about it. Are there any thoughts of square powers instead of round? One supposedly nicer than the other. The only reason I asked is my next door neighbor is square, I'm round and I like this better.
I could have sworn we were going with square.
That's cheap.
I look like a round.
Yeah, I agree. Well, we'll double back, but I'm pretty sure we all agreed with the square.
Again, if, if, if the round looked better, that's great, but the thought, I mean, it might change the work of building.
Oh, I'm reaching.
I call brown more than yellow and building, building. Parking that, you're keeping the old lights, I'm getting brown just to keep. That and thirty, forty. Why?
What, what is the two new houses, we cross the street and they're porch, drove it and they're square around, you don't know.
They're probably in a square. I think that's why when the conversation came up, we, we said we should shift to square. And when you look, even look at the new houses on river. Square is.
It is.
The trend, almost all square now.
Yeah.
Well, yes, square, check.
Trying to square now and we should be pivoting.
Now, so in the public, are you, any comments from the board?
This is really good work.
That's great.
What was the cost? What actually?
The building cost one point two million less.
He's, he's not gonna give you the top number because, because.
Four point forty.
Three point two.
Yeah, I saw that. Then, uh, if I recall from my notes from March twenty twenty-one, there was a twenty twenty bond that funded this whole thing. Is that still gonna fund the whole project or is there?
There's actually.
Whole new finance kinda?
No, there's, there's, uh, don't quote me on the number, we have to confirm, I believe it's either four, five. Like bond ordinances. So, now we have the cost assessment for PD and the community center. Now we are going back and engaging the fin- finance council. I'm gonna say across the teeth and out the eyes, make sure everything works. And we're going through Monmouth County, Monmouth County pooling. Which is a hundred and twenty municipals coming together.
Yep.
To get the funding, because it's, it's a much more cost effective from the cost to do it and the rate.
Hmm.
It's the second time, third time they've done it, once was COVID. And this might be the second or third time.
Hmm.
But all that's in progress as we speak.
As it were, does the county pools their projects and then?
Yeah, they go to all the different towns and say, hey, I think you knew upwards of ten million, I don't know maybe the exact number, Teresa's not here. But I think they say, hey, you can get upwards of ten million, pull it together, and it just gives you that much more of an advantage from a rate. Um.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a great question.
Betsy, are you happy with the? Financials on this whole thing?
I am.
Okay.
Uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be less than I think what we had originally proposed.
Good.
So.
I know you're kind of the canary in the corn. And you're happy, McGovern's happy, Betsy's happy, Ruth's happy, I think, very good change here.
Well, I think, I think Drew and Kristen have done a nominal job. I really do, thank you, because, as someone said before, this, we've been doing this for nine years. And Drew was, and Kristen, came on board, they were sworn in in January and the public was published in three months. Amazing. Thank you. And thank your family.
I got, I got a final question on, um, parking. So you said existing was twenty-eight, the demand was sixty-five, that was existing.
Correct.
And then, is that where your company, is that where I got cut off? That was somewhere. I saw, so. So what is the proposed parking gonna be? So not with the church, because the church is.
The community center room is just the hair smaller.
Yep.
Um, only requires forty-two spaces compared to the fifty, the other one. So the required parking for the new combination is fifty-seven spaces. We have the same twenty-eight in the parking lot.
Okay.
Um, so you're with, plus the four on the street, those are real, no question, leaving out the church and then, and then, and then you have the church. The church lot, as it sits today, has about twenty spaces available.
Yeah.
And the hope is that we can reconfigure it and number six got part of the project in the church.
And Jimmy, if I may, so we've had really productive conversations with this chapel.
Yep.
They've agreed both to a short and long-term parking solution. Um, and that's underway. So I wanna make sure that the planning board have the most up-to-date information. Um, the other piece too to keep in mind is that the current community center, eh, the room itself, I believe is twelve hundred, two hundred and fifty square feet. So we actually reduced it, um, not only to accommodate parking, but then aligned it with, you know, the groups that use the space. So again, just back to that functionality, but I wanted to make sure I had that up there.
Do you have any historic perspective as to how, I mean, now, the one building is your buying a Houston.
Yeah.
Uh, how's your parking doing now? Cause I, cause I'm assuming the people are gonna be using it, it's gonna be similar group plus the same group that's gonna be coming to the park, so I mean, what is your load now? How are you?
It functions.
It seems, well, everything functions when it's there. It has to.
Yep, so the parking is, is, is a two-part perspective. So think of, I'm gonna use Google Maps and not be very technical. Though you have the D B W here from this direction, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you have the police department. So with the community field and the tennis courts and all of them, though. So, D B W is separate, right? So when we focus on the P V, we're really focused on a net gain for parking. So those came down to three variables. One, the parking lot itself, right at the P V site, we talked about that. We're actually adding additional handicap, there's only one right now, and any two more. Two, the offset improvements that are being taken place. So we're actually, spanning, I don't know the right correct term, but.
Why do they? Why do you push three line, this, so the curb line is uniform, the main one.
So that means there's a net gain of.
So you're gonna gain, you're gonna gain what, two spots there?
Four.
Yeah.
You gain enforcement?
And then the fist chapel is the third perspective. Which adds, you know, upwards twenty, thirty extra spots, depending on the design. Um, which is in progress. Um, so when you, when you tackle the, in the P V direction. It is a sig- I would qualify it as a significant improvement to leaving the parking constraints. Not only given the P V and the offset improvements, but the fist chapel, uh, agreement that's gonna be put into place.
And you even have. You even have a dozen spaces opposite Allen Street. Which is a short walk to the community center. Which is adjacent to the basketball, right there.
Right there.
Yeah, you've got spaces there too, which, we've added that path, so you can see that connectivity as it goes past the playground.
And there'll be parallel along the baseball, third, third street along each other.
Correct.
And I've been there a million times, people might use, you find parking.
Where would they park in the interim during construction?
One more time?
In church.
In the church, I asked, where do you?
Yeah.
You worked that as you showed.
Short term, exactly, it'll be part of the, the package too, so.
With, with staging on the best part. Church and then usually construction vehicles. I'm sorry, the tennis courts. I'm sorry, thank you. And then any contractor vehicles typically will be two jobs, and then the burly part. At D B W.
Oh.
So it's in a, in, yeah. Area.
I may not press order here, but the plan, uh, at some point, the plan in front of the B B W was to get spots in front of that, where that grass areas, so.
We're just beginning the process.
Yeah, parking that way, it would serve the parkers, I'd kind of add in a moment.
That was the initial plan, but now the focus is more towards the renovation of D B W. Which you guys will see. Hopefully.
Hopefully in two months.
Days.
Right, correct.
Not calling a special meeting. Discerning the priorities and the issues, right? That was a big piece last time when, when, when we thanked you, so I wanna.
John, did you have something? Let me make the following observations, and for you before. Um, during the presentation, um, you know, the planning board's twenty sixteen examination report. Uh, as it pertained to this particular, you know, development. Said, and I quote, the police department space is outdated. And suffers from the strange configuration of small rooms. There is inadequate storage. And the jail cells can only be reached by going outside. Booking areas are right next to the dispatch area, which is right on top of the conference area. The building should be remodeled to make it more efficient. Well, I don't think we remodeled. Um, I leave it to you as to whether or not, and again, realize, and the reason I, I reference that for the planning. That's our planning document. This is again, one of those checkoff things, recognize this. During your last reexamination report, this facility, and there's other, there are other facilities, we were focused primarily before on the police department. There are other, other aspects in your reexamination report, which did deal with community facilities, access to community facilities. Well, I leave it to you in terms of what our role is as a planner. That was our guide. That was our map, if you will. I leave it to you as to whether or not, we can check this one off on the twenty sixteen reexamination report, once this is built and the amount of what's been presented this evening. Let's make that observation.
So, pardon?
At, at this point.
Yeah.
After you've had a robust discussion, you can continue to have your discussion. What we generally do is, and, and what I'm quoting from, quite frankly, is the March twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty-one, you know, report that I prepared. Uh, to, you know, mayor and council, containing the new police building in the Capitol's view. It's been, uh, some four pages.
Yeah.
The things that we addressed at that point in time, areas of concern, pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Did you check that one on?
Yeah.
Landscaping, yes, did you check that one?
Yeah.
Trash slash generator enclosures. Did you check that more?
Yes.
Sidewalk along the building, uh, frontage, um. There was going to be some discussion about relocating the building's frontage along this street, it sounds like that's an ongoing project. Uh, there was an issue of, as to whether or not there was additional signage and, and paying attention to the front facade of this building. We're, we're down to circular or corner columns.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they asked whether or not we checked that one off. I do wanna ask a question, there, there was, uh, and again, I know we're trying to stay away from this in the past, at one point in time, there's an iteration for a solar panel at the back of the lot, is, is that still there?
So both buildings are designed to support solar. And we're working with a energy consultant to determine if it makes sense to have solar installed now or later. Irrespective of that decision, the buildings are designed to support solar.
I think wait, doesn't wait, right, so those and rooftop arrays?
Uh, so I wouldn't call it this.
Well, this, I, so as you know, this, this was a solar array that was a separate.
Yeah.
Attacked facility, I'm assuming we're not doing that. Okay. But I do want to.
I do wanna call it out though. So you see this, this looks like a floor. This is actually a flat part of the roof, this is where the solar array would go, you cannot see this from the street level.
Right.
Um, the community center south wall, although, not recommended to put solar on it per the energy consultant. Um, it, it would support, that would just be on the roof and you would see that.
Okay.
So, um, and the other thing to call out, since we're on the energy, um, the spots are gonna be future E V. So there's an expectation that state guidelines are gonna come down with what it means to have electric charging vehicles for police. So if you look here and for municipal, these four spots here will have all the infrastructure in place, and once the regulatory guidance comes out from the state on what it means to charge police vehicles. We just have the, the unit installed, but all the infrastructure is in place. And then if you notice here, one of the handicap and two public spaces will also be electric vehicle charging as well.
And one of the other, and the one of the, and the last, uh, thing that we spent, against my recollection, in several period of time, back in, uh, during that presentation was that, uh, because we were dealing with about one facility. Uh, during that presentation was that, uh, because we were dealing with about one facility at that time. Um. That because in the past, it had been a multi-use facility. Um, and we spent time on what was going to happen with the community aspect of that. And was there going to be meeting rooms and lavatory facilities? We didn't even get to the kitchen, but. Um, so again, I ask, I, to your consideration, did we hit that check off? Sounds like you can probably take this one out of your twenty sixteen reexamination.
Yeah.
I leave that to your thoughts. Generally, what happens at this point in time, if there's nothing further, we don't need any more instruction. You would direct me to prepare a report. Uh, Mayor and Council along the lines of what I did in the past to highlight certain things that we, we had any concerns, if there's any continuing concerns. Highlight those from you now and prepare that before the committee of council. And they won't be able to check off if they did their capital review and efforts within JSA. Uh, forty, fifty, five, then they have to bring it back.
Any other comments from the board? The only thing, I'm sorry, I keep asking questions, but it's the, the wall wall. From, from Doug's letter from twenty twenty one. Uh, we did bring up the wall ball structure and obviously in this new design, that structure goes away, is that. Uh, and I know that elsewhere in town, they're considering a wall ball, um, as projects, is that, is that. Thinking then we'll just let Fairhaven Fields have the wall ball in this area and not have one?
The thinking is we, we will, this wall will go away, and, but we will have a wall. And where that wall will be located, whether it's near the community center or Fairhaven Fields is TBD, but everyone involved in um. Uh, wall ball or multi-purpose wall conversations is in the loop on this. Um, so more to come.
Sure, send to the opposite of Ron Reagan's chart and chant to build that wall.
And, and they, um, we have the. Estimate to design the wall already and to move forward of that, but we didn't wanna take away. From the goal tonight with this, barring our steps and brick, right here was actually the one that. Would potentially design the multi-purpose wall.
Okay.
So just wanted to call that out.
Thank you. Any other comments uh, from the public? Yes.
Let's tell you what has been done still, as one of these. Your next big project, I think is going to be. A new library. I think the absolute smartest thing to do at this point would put it upstairs in the community center. It's a better location, be consistent, including through school, there's less travel, uh, just things. Economies of scale, and you, and it's an open area, you've already got the rest of the zone. Right now, when the library has some kind of program, the kids have to come down or, or someplace else, the building for that program. This is the time, put the, like, expand the libraries thing, uh, updated. Upstairs and maybe make the community center or whatever. Like roof height, you've got. The library and you also have windows, as you can see how right now the windows in the library.
You know upstairs, right? You just have your mezzanine, your ad space.
What kind of ceiling might you got in the center? Right now, it's a big open, that's saying it's more inside up there.
We're going to have a. A gable structure, at the high point, it's about.
Yeah.
And it comes down to about ten, at least.
Exactly. Put that, nothing but a big open space. Does require a kitchen, bathroom, or anything, and I think it would want to do.
Thank you. So, um, so should we?
I propose a motion that you directed for a right of Mayor and Council concerning. Our special meeting and review of Capitol project and this particular topic regarding the development of the police department, meaning my head of motion.
Second.
You get that standing?
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Kehoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Minkin?
Yes.
Or Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Technically open to the public on any topic, because we do.
I just wanna say, thank you very much for the time and the attention. Um, very much appreciated, making you guys proud.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Another, another topic.